My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Benko, could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Breton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emig? Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahouser?
Here.
Eight members are present today.
Thank you. First up, under Presentations, Mr. Stefanovic from the township, and Ms. Oswald.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, I wanted to thank Laurel for coming along. We have an update to the Eagle Park plan that I thought would be good to share with everyone. There's a few slides, and she's extremely knowledgeable on everything that's happening with that. So actually, at this point, I'll turn it over to Laurel to go over the few things we have here.
Okay, so we have two different plans we provided you. The pretty picture you see before you is referred to as the concept plan, done by our landscape architect, which shows the full plan's completion. It was done by a landscape architect, so therefore it didn't necessarily take into account all of the engineering grading and things like that that need to occur with the property. So when we applied, to begin with, the first phase of the project involves three different sub-projects. If you are at the high school at all, you have felt the shake of blasting occurring right now while the sewer line is getting relocated out of the floodplain area. That is the first step in the project, to be followed by a floodplain restoration project, which will actually take all of the sediment that's occurred over time out of the floodplain and reposition it up on the flat area that will become the field, which will be real nutrient-rich for bringing in good grass for that purpose. The floodplain work is actually being funded by a Grand Greener grant from DEP at a cost of about $1.5 million. We were fortunate enough to get a grant for the full amount. So that's the second phase, and that's going out for bid in February and should begin by late spring, early summer. That floodplain work would then conclude by the end of summer, beginning of fall, and we hope to have Phase One of the park improvements out for bid and completed by the summer of 2021. Those improvements are detailed in red. That's in the red dotted line. So that is mostly a pavilion, some walking trails, an outdoor educational center on the township side of the property, and there will also be on the bump out on the school side where there's like a little bit of green that sticks up beside the tennis courts. There will be flat stone spaces that would be conducive for environmental education as well, where the students could sit on those flat stones and ride or do projects. But the space that is below the bridges at the top of the screen is the outdoor education space that's on the actual park property, and that'll be like stumps and logs that are placed for educational purposes. The students will be able to sit there and do their work. If you turn, if we go to the next slide, this is what we applied for the grant for in the dotted line, but once we got the engineers to actually look at the grading, we decided to change the plan a little bit, and we instead moved to keeping all of the trail on the township building side of the creek. So it didn't make sense to run a trail across the creek and have it end and everybody have to turn around and come back. So we ran it in a loop, and that loop starts in a parking lot that'll be off the back of our building and loops around. So that is really the main change to the plan, and we did get $250,000 DCNR grant for the park improvements. So we are working on additional phasing and additional financing for the rest of the park improvements, and we'll be working on it for the several years to come to get the other park improvements completed. But you will see, pretty much, you will see work going on there for the next year and a half, at least, under this phase.
Is there any questions that we can answer about that one? So as of right now, it looks like we're gonna plan two educational areas as opposed to the original, which only had one. So hopefully, that'll help all. And then the path going around will just be good as far as people making it the whole way around the park.
There's still an intention to bring a pathway or a driveway in on the backside of those practice fields now that we currently have below the high school. Wasn't there some discussion about getting some sort of access in along that fence?
There's to be a bridge that comes across, which would be an additional phase. You see the bridge that's located near the tennis courts. That bridge would have to go in. The abutments will be going in as part of the floodplain work, but the actual bridges, nobody would fund that from the three entities that we got funding from, so we have to plan for those bridges. But the actual abutments that the bridges will sit on are being paid for by the Grand Greener grant.
How about the other side, though, like over towards the alley?
No, there's no, well, that's not our property, so we didn't plan to do that. But I know there was, we were kind of thinking that the school might be interested in something like that, but we couldn't put that in on our plan because it's not our property. But the bridge is meant to connect with your walkways that you have associated with the tennis court so that the students can come across the bridge to get access to the park.
Okay, and then the other item, I made a copy of a budget message that was done by Laurel that's in our Dover Township newsletter, and the message here is excellent summary of what's all planned for the township for this coming year. So I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but if you didn't notice it in your Township newsletter, take a look at this, and it goes over very well all of the items that we're planning to do. We, like you, are gonna be very busy in the coming years. And one I did want to highlight, and I know that, I take it there's been some meetings already, Intermediate Avenue is on the list as far as being repaved and get it back to a lot better shape once the school work is done. So I know there's some work on that. Our sanitary sewer system is still gonna have a lot of work going on to it in quite a few areas in the township. We are moving ahead with the north of the borough, we call it. Where sewer and water's gonna be going up that way, and we're hoping to provide some more resources for people. And then a couple other little things here. I just mentioned there that the water system is gonna go along with the sewer up to the north end of the town. And one item that was mentioned here, just for information, the fire department will be ordering a new, their plan is to order a new engine to be delivered next year. They're trying to stay up to date with their equipment, too, both for steady equipment, but also this does help everyone's insurance rates and everything that the whole area has appropriate equipment. Actually, it's a little bit old right now, but it is very well kept and doing a good job. But with the current engine being a 2001, it's time to move forward and get a new one in 2021. So if there's any other questions that we can help you with, or?
Thank you for that update.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next up, under Presentations, we have our middle school bid results with Mr. Badea from Crabtree and Mr. Nelson's help at some point, I'm sure.
Thank you. So in terms of an update, we're gonna summarize the bids that were originally received with our first go-around. As everyone is aware, we were unsuccessful in obtaining an electrical bid on our first go-around. This is a summary of the results of the original bid, December 17th, for general construction, where ECI Construction submitted a low bid. And we've highlighted in yellow just some discussion items regarding potential alternates and deducts that were included in the original contract for consideration. Next is the HVAC contract, also submitted December 17. Myco Mechanical also involved with the previous, the current high school project, and again, a few items highlighted in yellow for consideration. Last contract originally received on the 17th for plumbing construction, again, Myco Mechanical for both contracts is the low base bidder. So shortly after not having received an electrical bid, we were able to solicit two other bidders, and Midstate Mechanical is the low bid. That base bid number is about $200,000 higher than the original estimate. However, it is consistent with the cost increase we've seen across the other prime contracts, so it's fairly consistent. And again, in yellow were some preliminary recommendations that we discussed with the administrative team for board consideration and what possible deduct alternates might be considered. So here's a bid summary of the base bid of each of the four prime contracts at 6.9 million. If the items in yellow were accepted, not a significant number, however, that does result in a savings of about $153,000 to bring the total bids at 6.7 million. Our estimate for the construction, which these bids are consistent with, was 5.7. The post-bid assessment is after the bids were initially received with the general HVAC and plumbing contract, we start talking to the contractors about possible other cost savings that would be issued in the form of a change order after contract execution. And there you can see there was a dollar value of approximately $65,000. Again, not significant, and in our opinion, the value of those savings was not worth the work that was shown in the contract documents for a number of the educational spaces. That leaves a total delta of approximately $1 million for the middle school renovation project. In terms of the schedule, if later in the agenda, there's an action item to approve the bids, we now have four prime contracts necessary to proceed. If the board elects to proceed, we feel comfortable with the schedule and the three major phases to begin work shortly after contract award. So that's kind of a quick overview, concentrating on the electrical bid that we hadn't originally received. These were slides, and if there were some references for areas of construction that were part of the post-bid assessment and deducts. So if there are any questions or comments pertaining to the action item or the electrical bids received or any of the bids received to date?
A little question regarding the electrical bid. There was a pretty significant difference between the two bids there. Do we know much about the company that was the low bid there? Do we have any kind of history with them, or have you worked with them in the past on other projects?
We have worked with that firm on a number of projects and school projects and had successful results. Dave, I don't know if you're familiar?
No, I've never worked with either one of those. I know...
Not Midstate or Org?
Org is, they were the electrical contractor on Middletown, which we went to see Middletown. If you went along on the tour. And Midstate's done, I can't remember, they've done quite a few schools. Midstate is actually a division or subsidiary of ECI, sort of like Lowbar Electric, Lowbar GC. So they're sort of a sister company.
So we're comfortable with that?
Could you walk through the deduct alternates, again, $153,000 and what each of those are, and if maybe our administrators could talk about those a little bit and their feelings behind some of that?
Sure.
So what you'll see, too, in the scope of the work for something like, you know, the science labs, for instance, you'll see corresponding alternates in most of the contracts. So GC4 was a science lab demolition work, and then six was the other item identified to do some work in the band storage area. Again, the dollar values were, you know, $12,700 for deduct. Again, if it's shown in parentheses, that's identified as a deduct from the base bid, and the last item was only a $4,000 value to be deducted from the contract.
Jen, do you want to go back to the last one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The two in yellow here that we talked about not doing, the science lab peninsulas, I want to say, what, there are six of them?
Yeah, there's six in each room. They sort of stick out at a funny angle.
Yeah, from the side, you know, the science, they, right, and they're built-ins.
We struggle to get 25 or so desks in the room with those peninsulas sticking out.
So we were going to kind, we were saying we could live with them not coming out, but we would struggle with the desks going in. And the middle school didn't feel they needed them. They use lab tables, so they didn't feel they needed them. And the ensemble classroom and band storage, that was the band storage that we were going to remodel. So the instruments were outside of the classroom and now in a separate room. So we talked about we could build some storage in the classroom, in the band room, to put the storage, rather than doing it in a separate room.
But it's not a huge savings.
It's not a huge savings, right.
And it might cost you...
It probably costs more than that.
Nearly the same, if not more.
Oh, yeah, to do it ourselves, absolutely.
Okay, Jen?
So I have a question quickly about the science lab. So if we wouldn't do anything with them, how, that'll have a direct impact then on the educational?
Yes.
It'll be an educational impact to the students then in that classroom.
Right. It's very tight. If you put 20, 25, I don't know if anybody here is from high school right now, but if you put 25 or so desks in there, it's tight. I mean, there's no our way. You can't get around. We've dealt with it for a while, but for this age group of kids, I'm not so sure. In my opinion, I'm not so sure it worked well.
So the, on that last slide there with the gymnasium air conditioning in there, you're saying that was not part of the original base bid? That was in a sort of separate?
Right.
And so we're looking at... So what was the previous slide, then, that had the adding 22,000 on it? What did that represent, again?
Well, there's, if you take, let's just say you took the gymnasium air conditioning. You would have to take GC1 on the general contractor. You'd have to take on the HVAC contractor. You'd have to take the same one, the...
Electrical.
Electrical, and more than likely, I'm not so sure, maybe the plumbing due to the fact of getting condensate water away. But you would end up taking all, if you take one alternate, you have to take all four of them for that same scope item. So like on here, where you see gymnasium air conditioning for HVAC, it's another $190,000. That's more of the equipment. That's the installation of it, where under the GC, it would be the cutting of the roof, the putting of the roof curb in, if there's any structural changes that have to be made to the roof to support it, that kind of thing. And then, of course, electrical is getting the electric...
Power.
Power to it, and the controls and such for it. I don't know that there was a plumbing on that one, but it could be.
So as it stands, the ones in white right now are part of the...
Well, the gymnasium air conditioning would not be. That would be an addition. If you want to do that, we have to add that on to the current price.
Yeah, if you look at that second column under, where the title is base bid, if it is an add, you would need to...
Add that, too.
Add that alternate, and again, the corresponding HVAC and electrical. If it's a deduct and you accept it, it will be taken out of the contract.
So to reduce the cost, we focused on the deducts?
Yes.
Okay. So the original quote, or the original slide that you showed us those numbers, they include the additions?
They include the deducts.
They include the deducts, not the adds.
Not the additions.
Not the adds, just the deducts.
Yeah, to keep the cost down, the deducts were evaluated.
153 is included in that, but you're saying the 6.7 there does not, or 6.9 does not include those additions?
No.
Correct.
Does not. And we, after we, I know the big discussion about getting air in a gym was huge, but you have to realize, we're not gonna have graduations there anymore.
Right.
We're not gonna have...
As many students.
Right, in that gym.
Hardly anything going on in a gym, other than gym class. And generally, when you get into the hotter months, unless it's raining, they're outside anyway. So...
Probably under the HVAC contract, the big one is boilers.
Yeah, replacement of the cooling tower was an add. And then deduction of the boilers, that was where I suggested we use the two that are in the intermediate school currently, transfer them to the high school and reuse two of them. Instead of buying three new ones, we would only buy two new ones and reuse the two that are a little bit smaller in there. Gives us a little more flexibility, too, if you think about it. They only run when they have to, so if we don't need the big ones, maybe only one of the small ones will run on a day when it's not real cold or...
So am I understanding this right? So tonight, when we're voting, any of the ones that are additions are not being included in this vote?
No.
We're just deciding whether we want to keep the ones in yellow or not.
To reduce costs, yeah, our focus.
And if we knock out the yellow ones, we're gonna save $153,000.
That's all you're gonna save.
That's all we're gonna save. And if we try to do these things in yellow five years down the road, when the absence, like when the boiler goes, or when, you know, we decide, okay, we need to fix this or fix that, the cost is gonna be probably significantly higher.
If I had to put a number on it, and you say four to five years down the road, that $150,000 is gonna cost you probably in excess of $500,000.
At least double.
So the motion tonight, when you accept the bids, it's a very long motion. In the first part of the motion, I did say without selecting the deduct alternates. So that means that they'll stay in that base bid amount. We won't take that $153,000, the total of all those, out, okay?
Nor will we approve the other additions on the alternative.
Right, right.
Correct. So you are, but those weren't in, they're not in the motion to begin with, the base bid to begin with.
Okay.
So you're not approving air conditioning. You're not approving the cooling tower, the replacement of the water heater tanks and pumps.
Air conditioning.
Some of that stuff, yes.
So the items that are in white, then, on our list that we had, are any of those also items that down the road are gonna really need to be addressed, that, you know, are gonna be an additional cost? I mean, should we reconsider those as well, or no?
Those items are identified in the summary sheet, are identified as post-bid assessment. If you can jump back another, I think, forward another slide or two. Yeah, I think maybe to zoom back out, because of the project coming in higher than the estimate, working with the administrative team in our office, we did not look to add any more cost to the add alternates. We focused on evaluating the deducts, and I think your question, sir, is pertaining to some of the potential post-bid assessments of some change orders that we had discussed earlier. They are, that scope is in as you accept the base bid. They are included. We thought the dollar value for the scope of work was not commensurate. So again, it's that price issue. The post-bid assessment items are in the base bid scope. You could, the board could entertain that at a later point in time, but the alternates need to be accepted or not at the time of the award of the contract. So they're two kind of separate entities, if you will. Does that answer your question?
I'm still a little bit fuzzy on the things in white here, the things that are the additions. I was thinking that they were included in with that initial amount. So you're saying if we do not approve them tonight, then they're not included. We can't go back and add them later.
The add alternates, that is correct.
At that price, at that...
Correct.
At that...
You can always go back and add them, but then your price wouldn't be what it shows on here.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. This locks the contractor into that pricing.
So the question that I have over all of this, number one, we're like a million dollars over budget. Where are we gonna come up with that money? And is that gonna put us into financial difficulty that would, could result in a tax increase that we were not aware of or planning for?
So currently, we have about $13.1 million sitting in capital reserves that we had moved money over to fund capital projects. It's... Um, it's, it's been great that we could do that. Um, we did, um, I'm sorry. I've been talking a lot tonight. Uh, we, we did, um, say that we would put six million dollars towards the middle school and high school project of our cash that goes towards the debt payments. So of that thirteen point one, you would have about seven point one left. Um, in addition to that, there are some other D ten items that we will need to take out of that pocket of funds, um, to the tune of maybe around approximately, um, seven fifty to a million dollars. So that leaves us with about six point one million dollars to be left in the capital reserve fund. Um, that money, you know, would, would need to be, um, we, we would need to make sure that we keep enough money there to plan for future capital projects down the line. Um, as some of our buildings such as Live age a little bit and, you know, their infrastructures start to deteriorate a little, we will need to look at maybe some renovations over at Live. Um, so that's, that's where we have the pot of money that we would take this extra million dollars from.
So we could, if we take that there, we would still have a little bit of reserve left that, that should something come up, we could cover those costs as well.
You are correct, yes.
So I-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay.
Go ahead, finish.
Just thinking out loud here. So to me then, I think, and, and while I don't want to say that a hundred, I think you're probably going to say the same, a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars is a lot of money, but with the scope of this, this whole project, I, I just wondered if, if we are overthinking this as far in trying to save a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars?
I mean, down the road, if you were to make some of those improvements, that's where I would take those funds from.
And as I said, I mean, they said it's all probably doubled if we would do that in the future.
Well, a- and I think we talked a little bit about it. I can't remember if it was in committee or earlier, the fact that even in the amount of time since we started talking about the project in general, uh, if we would have started right away and been able to do everything right away, we would have saved, you know, millions of dollars. So I, I mean, the cost is going to cost, I'm, I'm fearful of the cost, you know, especially with demand of construction and, and the fact that it's, you know, just exponential. Um, I mean, I agree, a hundred and fifty-three thousand is, you know-
Makes, makes you choke, but-
Yeah, right. Not to scoff at it, but, you know, when you're looking at the grand scheme of things.
And just, just to wrap my head around this now, the items that are in yellow here really do have an impact on the potential education of the students. So I guess those are the things that, you know, if, if it's a hundred and fifty-three thousand, that's a lot of money. But if it's impacting the students, maybe that's not a wise deduct. So, you know, in this, in the scheme of, you know, the whole project, a hundred fifty-three thousand is a small portion of that, but it could have a bigger impact on the kids. So I would think it, it might behoove us all to move forward and keep those in that project. What I didn't realize was the things that were in white were not part of it. I thought that was, that was already in part of it too.
I thought that too.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, so I missed that.
We broke, we broke them out like that so that we could get a base bid and then if you, if we came in really low, we could add it. That's probably why we did it that way, rather than go in with them already there and then have to back them out.
And once we vote tonight, we can't add them back in.
Can't add them back, correct. You can do them as a change order, but it won't be for the dollar amount that you're seeing now.
It would be for a lot more.
Well, I don't know that, I mean-
It could be less.
Could be less, could be more, you don't know that.
More if it's an add. So, so in essence, there will be no air conditioning in the gym, is that what you're saying? No air conditioning in the gym. Um, what are, do you, do you mind like taking a minute to go down over those ones that are in white that, that you don't feel is, are needed? Just so we can understand if we get a question, what aren't we doing?
Yeah, because I don't have it in front of me.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to fix that. Okay, so...
Uh, general construction, start with?
There you go. Right there, that's good. So the, yeah, the gymnasium air conditioning, we didn't include, that was an add if we wanted to do it. Um, and I, I know we talked about the shelter lock assemblies or, we're going to put them on all classrooms, we're just not going to put them on the assembly spaces, uh, like the gym, the auditorium, um, cafeteria, I think.
Large, yeah.
Kind of your large group areas.
What's a shelter lock?
Uh, that's where, um, teacher has a, teacher administrator has a key fob. They can lock their door from anywhere. If they're in the back of the room, as long as the door's shut, they can lock it. Police officer or principal or safety officer could lock the entire building with pushing one button. So if we had an intruder, it wouldn't be, oh my gosh, everybody got to lock their door and, you know, you might be somewhere else and don't know if your door's locked or not, you could lock it from where, wherever you're at in the building.
So if they're all in the gym?
We just didn't put them in, we didn't put them in the big assembly spaces.
The real large occupancy spaces.
So they can't be, so you're saying that in an emergency, they wouldn't be locked down?
No. No.
They wouldn't be locked down automatically?
They wouldn't be locked down automatically, you'd still be able to lock them.
You could still lock them down.
They just wouldn't do it automatically.
Right.
That's a little scary.
We don't have it at all now, in any, in any, anywhere, anywhere. So it's very expensive. I mean, you can see just through the assembly spaces, it's two hundred thousand, that's just on the-
Right.
General, that doesn't include the electrical. Um, so that's very expensive. And then the next one down is band room instrument storage. That was to add all new instrument storage in, in the current instrument storage band room, uh, which we, we decided we weren't, we didn't think we needed to do that. That's around seventy-one, almost seventy-one thousand. And then the last one on this list is, um, it's a deduct. Was, uh, our goal was here to bring more light into the cafeteria, to put larger window on the side that goes towards the football field. And then where we have that sort of lobby in front of the cafeteria is to put some large openings there with garage doors, so we could open it up and make it more open, le- less like a, you know, an enclosed room. So we didn't recommend taking that deduct, but it's there.
So we kept it, we kept-
We kept that.
Those doors in there.
Yeah, we kept that.
Right, we kept those doors.
That'll remain.
That'll remain. And the doors, I mean, when I say garage doors are, I don't do it justice, they're not really garage doors. They're fire resistant doors.
Large with some transparency.
Right, so it's not really a garage door.
Open that room a bit.
Um, and then for, uh, again, if you go, we're in the mechanical now, the H V A C side. Um, of course, the big one up are a hundred ninety thousand for gymnasium air conditioning. Uh, and then the next big one is, uh, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand to replace the cooling tower. Um, cooling tower, it's in pretty good shape, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice to have a new one. I, I hazard a guess it's going to go another ten years at least. Uh, it's something that can be easily transferred to in and out. It's on the roof, you pick it up with a crane, you, you unbolt it, you drop it, you put another one up there and you hook it up, you're go. It's not a lot, it's not, you're not in the building, you're on the roof, it's not a big deal. Um, so, I mean, I think, I think we've got a good number of years left in it, so. Um, and of course, the boilers were recommended to take. I can't read the bottom, ensemble classroom and band storage, that's, um, to get rid of some small, small rooms and make them one big room for storage, so. Uh, I think we can probably handle, you know, could handle that a little differently. Um, uh, replacement of the water heater tanks and pumps, uh, that's, again, uh, that's like almost three hundred thousand dollars. I- it's not huge to put water heater and pumps in, um, in the holding tank, it's not a huge thing. We could do that almost on the fly, uh, so it's a lot of money. I think you can probably do it yourself cheaper than that. Um, and then again, this is the electrical, so you can see we, it's thirty, almost thirty-two, almost thirty-three thousand dollars for the air conditioning for the electric. And then the shelter lock assemblies are another sixty thousand, um, if you wanted to do for the assembly spaces. Uh, and then in conjunction with replacing the water heater and tanks, uh, I can't read that far, uh, forty, almost forty-seven hundred would be a deduct here because they wouldn't have to do any work on those. Um, and then cafeteria overhead doors, um, if we don't do them, that's a deduct, or do them, that's a deducted to twenty-six hundred. And then replacement of cooling tower, again, there's, if we replaced it, there'd be a, about a thirty-five hundred dollar upcharge addition.
Again, kind of summarizing where we're at then, the items in yellow are the items that you feel as an administrative team, they're related to educational, um, you know, impact. Those are the items that if we were going to make a, that's the hundred fifty-seven thousand, correct? That's the hundred fifty-seven thousand that we had originally been talking about that we were talking about possibly putting that back in. And if I understand it right, between all three of the different aspects of the construction, back to the air conditioning, you're, you're probably looking at about, according to these bids, about two hundred and, point, two hundred and forty and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to install air conditioning in the gym. Is that correct? Is that, you'd add all three together and that's better?
I didn't, I didn't add them up, and I think you're probably close.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just trying to get a picture of what it would cost.
Yeah, somewhere about two fifty, two seventy-five.
How big of a deal is that? I mean, we've heard it for years that it's, you know, it's missing. It, you know, how big of a-
What, the air conditioning in the gym?
Yeah.
But at a high school? And I think that's, that's really different because, you know, there are so many more activities there. Again, the big thing was if it rains, graduations there without air con- air conditioning. The new high school has air conditioning in their gym. For the middle school, I just don't think it's that big of a deal.
How, do we know how it gets currently? Like, and the, the, how, how hot, how bad is it currently at the high school with the summer? Because I know my daughter's at the intermediate school and she said, you know, it's brutal in August, September, when they have gym in the middle school. How is that, is it, I, I don't have any kids in the high school, is it the same where it's, you know?
I'm sure it's the same. Mm-hmm.
A lot of times they're, but, and I don't think the middle school goes, help me out, somebody from middle school here. I don't think the middle school currently goes outside much for gym.
Because where would they go? Yeah.
And I think part of that is because they just don't have a place to go.
Yeah.
That's, that's close to the gym, that's close to, where, this has all, we have all the, we have this, we have the stadium's going to be right there. They're going to be able to go out on the stadium field, they're going to be able to go out on the practice fields if they want. They can go out when it's muddy on the stadium field because it's not muddy.
So it might not be as big of an issue as it is-
That's just what I'm thinking. I don't think it's going to be that huge of an issue because of the fact that they, they're going to have the stadium, they're going to have the practice fields where they don't have access to that now. It's just, it's just a long, you know, a long way to get there.
And you're going to have three, three, three grades versus four, so you're talking fewer kiddos also?
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, board president's communication. We did have an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss, uh, various personnel matters, uh, as matters related to the building project. Uh, so with that, we will move into our committee reports. The first one is the comprehensive plan, curriculum, and professional development committee. Mr. Delauter, Mr. Mrs. Herman, and Mrs. Mailey.
All right, um, obviously it was a shortened, uh, committee meeting, so we didn't get through everything on our agenda for that. But we did start out the eve, or the evening with a presentation by Mrs. Ferguson and the other kindergarten teachers at La, or I'm sorry Dover Elementary School, uh, who were piloting an E S G I system, which I did not educate. It's called, it's educational software for guided instruction. And, and, and the good thing about this program is Mrs. Ferguson actually brought this to Dr. Maloney and Mrs. Kroom, uh, asking to pilot, uh, this program. And what it is, is an online platform, uh, that includes a variety of early learning assessments such as letters, numbers, et cetera. And it allows the teachers to do quick one-on-one assessments, run reports for analysis to target like student weaknesses, uh, has a, a, a bunch of different resources and reports that help to improve, uh, parent communication. One of the things that Mrs. Ferguson said about this program is everything that we're using currently in the district isn't really set up for kindergarten because it's, it's its own special, um, set of circumstances there. So this was actually, uh, developed by a kindergarten teacher. So they've, they've been using it since the beginning of the year and they are reporting phenomenal success with this. Uh, students, uh, seem to be very happy with it. They're able to have, uh, see the student progress in front of them. It, it, it generates all kinds of reports, uh, that they can use. And, and currently, they said Dover Elementary Kindergarten and first grade teachers and one teacher from each of the other elementary buildings are, are using it so far. And so, uh, they are, are asking us to allow them to, uh, purchase this, this program, uh, for next year, for the entire, across the entire district. Uh, and I believe Dr. Maloney is, is in pretty much in agreement that, that we, we need to, to move forward with this program. Let's see, uh, we talked very briefly, um, about the curriculum coming up for board approval in February and that for the, um, A P calculus classes, the honors calc, uh, A P statistics, probability and statistics, and trigonometry. So you'll be seeing that coming up for, uh, approval in the, um, February meeting. Federal programs, the only thing we really talked about real quickly was, um, and federal programs deal with all your, our title programs. But because we ran out of time, we just, uh, wanted to just go over Title Four and that's the student support and academic enrichment grants, of which we receive about forty-three thousand dollars, uh, for that program. And as part of that, uh, we had a, um, Mr. Mr. Strilly, uh, from the intermediate school came in and gave us a, um, a, a sample lesson of how he teaches his STEM, uh, program to this, all the seventh and eighth graders. And we got to make these cool, uh, straw rockets. And then he actually, we had a, uh, a, uh, a launcher and we were able to launch our, um, our straw into the wall. And we did not have any fun with that at all. So, and, and pretty much, so that's all that, that we were able to get through, uh, this evening.
Okay, questions for Mr. Delauter? Okay, capital projects, Mr. DeShaw.
I believe Dave said he had some pictures to show us.
All right.
Okay, this is, uh, January, we haven't talked for two months, so, um, some of these are, pictures are a little old, but this is how the refrigerator and freezer came in for the new high school. And these crates and panels, so you can see the panels in this crate here on the right side of the picture. Um, they started setting them up and, um, this is just, uh, part of the front view when you're looking at them of the refrigerator and freezer. Uh, this is the inside, uh, as they're putting them up, there's when they're finished. Uh, still in the kitchen, they're starting to put the hoods up above the cooking areas.
Still in the kitchen, they're starting to put the hoods up above the cooking areas. This is actually back near the the gymnasium area here, so, putting some walls up. This is the corridor that's in front of the auditorium, and where the kids will sit to have lunch, and common area. So they're starting to put that up. You can see it here in, in the back. This is the gymnasium entrance here, these two big doors, and this is the, going up towards the front. This is the pool area up here. And then right above, on the left-hand side of this picture, is the corridor that goes in front of the auditorium and cafeteria and auditorium. That's another shot of the same thing. You can kind of see the gym there, putting this up. This was the, the auditorium. This is when we first started laying it out, and we've got the, you know, the stone on the, on the ground. This was when we did the orchestra pit, we started doing the pit here, and we still don't have the, the rest of the stage poured here, and this is all, but we're just really getting ready to do the wall here. Just another view of, of the stage area. So this steel area here you see in the front, that's orchestra pit underneath that. So we poured, started pouring concrete. Some days it was pretty darn cold in there, but we poured. And did it in sections. One section at a time. There's some flat sections, and then there's some tapered sections. So this is once we had all the sections poured, this is kind of what it looks like. You have a flat section up here, and a flat section in the middle, and then these tapered sections in between. This is actually standing, this is kind of where Wayne will sit to operate the auditorium stuff, the lights and the sound. He'll sit up in this little crow's nest, I wanna call it. So I'm actually up there, and you're looking right at the stage, so if any of you were there, saw pictures when it first started, and it didn't look that big, it looks big now, so.
Question on that, if I might ask, how, how big is the stage compared to our current stage at the high school? Is it, do you know?
I don't know offhand. It looks a lot bigger. I'll just say it that way. It looks a lot bigger. This is the orchestra pit. I'm actually in the pit, looking towards the stairs. There's stairs over here, and behind where I'm standing is, is, or I might be standing, I'm not sure, but is the wheelchair lift to get handicapped individuals in and out if we need to. This is just, no, I'm actually underneath the stage, so the stage is over top of me, and there's a steel beam right here. That's the lowest point in the orchestra pit, and if I stand down there and put my hands straight up, I can just barely touch it with my fingerprint tips. So it's very high. It's probably about nine feet or so to that. This is the stage looking towards the, where that little backhoe is down here, or digger is, that is the scene shop area, where they can build the scenes, and then that door will be that large, so they can actually bring a scene in if they need to. If they build it out there, they can wield in. This is, just, I'm standing in front of the stage now, looking back, so you can kind of get a concept of how large this is. This is the area I was telling you about where Wayne will be way up here, and then this'll look different in a couple minutes, but that's the crow's nest, and this, this area here is where the seats get more of like stadium-type seats. So to, to fill that in and make them look like stadium, it's all styrofoam. And I know that sounds funny, but that's what they filled it in with. So it's all styrofoam, it's a foot thick, it's four-by-eight sheets, and that's what's stacked up here. So we put styrofoam in there, and we make little steps out of it like this. And then we come along, we put steel in the front of it, and then we, and you can see the steel here, and then we pour concrete in, and that's what it looks like when it's all finished. This is from the top, looking down in this area up here. If Wayne's watching, and I know he is back there, this is where his control center is. It's kind of neat when you're up there. So, this is one of the shops. This is actually metal shop, and these are air scrubbers, hanging from the ceiling here, and they have these hoses coming down. This will be for over, if they're gonna do any welding, cutting with a torch, maybe grinding metal or something. We want to get that contaminants out of the building, out of the air, so the kids aren't breathing. That's what these do. There's six of them in this room altogether. This is the start of the auxiliary gym and locker rooms for the, for the gymnasium, which are just about done now. This is a picture of graphics, graphic arts. This is a starting picture. There's, it's actually two rooms, or, one room is for where they do the printing, and then this room up here is where they do the computer CAD stuff, and then there's another room way up there, that's the TV studio. Same picture, just a little bit further along. Got the ceiling painted here. We didn't have the ceiling painted a minute ago. Again, this is looking the other way. And this was today. They have the floor poured. This was wet when I was up there, so I didn't walk on it, but the floor's poured, and it, you know, it's, I think it looks nice. If you look in the ceiling here, you can see, I'm losing it here. They actually have the ceiling grid in up here. So we're moving right along. This is a classroom, so these are in various stages, depending on where you're at. Most of the second floor is a little bit further along than the first floor, but almost every room has whiteboards and tack boards up. Right now, they have the light switches installed, they've got the, most, almost every room has the ceiling grid and the lighting. It's, it's up. It's not hooked up yet electrically, because we still don't have permanent electric in the building, but it's there. So, we're moving, moving right along. This is another picture of a classroom. Just different view. This is, actually is CNC lab, Jason, this is the wood shop over here, and this is the CNC lab, and I took this picture to show you. One of the things is, there's a classroom above this. So to keep noise from going up, they, we installed a, a gridwork on the bottom of the trusses, and we put six inches of rockwool insulation above that, and two layers of five-eighth inch drywall below that to keep noise from going up. So we have, in this case, we're trying to keep noise going up, and on the other side, we're graphics lab, as we did the exact same thing, but we're trying to keep noise from coming down, so the noise won't carry back and forth. Just another shot of a classroom with the accent wall. Floors are going in. This was, I actually took this one today. This is one of probably a half dozen rooms that have the flooring installed. It's a little dusty yet. We didn't clean it, but, you know, the flooring's installed. And this is a science lab. We have casework on the walls. The science peninsulas are going in. So we're moving right along. This is just a nu, a different science lab, but you can, this shows you the, the, the peninsulas here on the side, and the lab here. It didn't come out as clear as I wanted it to, but there's drawers and what have you underneath there, so. This is teacher station. It's not quite in the right location, but it was sitting there, so I thought I'm gonna take a picture of it while I'm here, but that was the teacher's station up front. Notice in the back of that, there is a section for the interactive...
Television?
Interactive panel. I knew I was gonna get it wrong, so. This is actually on the first floor, and art room is to either side of this, and this is the first showcase that's finished. I'm now in the gymnasium, and I'm up on the running track. So this kind of gives you a view of the running track. Now, this was actually taken before the, the roof was on. That's why the wall looks so funny back here. It's actually wet. But they have all the steelwork done around here. And this is just another shot of the same thing, so, but it goes all the way around the top there. This was Tuesday. We got ten of these units in, and to give you an idea, handling, what they did is, they came two to a tractor trailer, and they took them off the tractor trailer and put them on a smaller truck, so they could get them into the site. They couldn't get the tractor trailer into the site, so they actually had to load them on another truck to get them back to the site. And they were, they're pretty big. So they're lifting them up on the roof here. Met a crane back in all that mud. It was a little frozen that day, so. This is just a shot of the roof, just to give you an idea how many penetrations are in this roof. It's a lot. I mean, we've got fan, exhaust fans, and I'm actually up on top of where the science labs would be, so there's a lot more exhaust stuff going on up there than, than most areas. That's just another shot of the roof, rooftop units. So it got cold this week. This is probably the coldest week we've had so far this year, and so we, they started building tents. So there's actually scaffolds underneath here, and they put this visqueen on top of them, and they clip it fast to the scaffold, and they heat it in there while they work, so they can, so they can continue to lay brick and block. And this is, I'm standing on the roof of the egg shop, and I'm looking towards Intermediate Avenue, and this is the driveway as, as it will come into the school when it's finished. They have it ready for blacktop in this picture. So this'll be grass over here, this'll be grass over here, driveway'll come in here, and underneath me is three garage doors, and then the little area over here to the left, you can see just a little wedge of it behind that pallet of stone, is the beginning of the greenhouse. And that, I think, is my last picture. Any questions?
There's a lot that's happened since the last time I was there, a month ago. That's a nice surprise.
Are we on schedule, pretty much?
We're probably about three or four weeks ahead right now.
Okay.
Aren't anything going wrong? But, yeah, we're, we're pretty much ahead right now.
Good.
And I don't foresee any pickups, so to speak. So we start preparing the boom down on Monday. So we're gonna do a critical separation, which basically means we're gonna cut it carefully, so when we take this half down, we'll pull that wall down. So, we're expecting it to be underground on Saturday.
And, and they're doing this during school hours?
Yes. We are taking students away from the area, so there won't be any classes in music, there won't be any classes in the locker rooms, there won't be any classes in the shops. So there'll be a good hundred and so feet of basically building between what we're doing and where we're at. We're gonna do this critical separation first, so we know when we pick something down, it's not gonna pull something out, so. Any other questions?
Thank you, Dave. Okay, anything else, Mr. DeShaw, from a committee?
Nope, that was everything.
Okay. So at this point, we move on to the middle school bid acceptance process. So I'm going to read a rather lengthy motion, then we can have some discussion around that. I'd like to entertain a motion to award bids for the Dover Area Middle School additions and renovations project to the lowest responsible bidders identified below, and authorize Crabtree, Roarball, and Associates to issue letters of intent to award, generate construction contracts, and issue notices to proceed. Number one, general construction contract to ECI Construction. Number three, HVAC construction contract to Micomechanical. Number four, plumbing construction contract to Micomechanical. And number five, electrical construction contract to Midstate Mechanical.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions and discussion?
That is the, basically the base bid without the alternates, correct?
Any else? Okay, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay, moving on to facilities and safe and supportive schools. Mr. Rahhauser.
Okay, I have a short report here. Public comment, none. Policy review, there will be policies that the committee will need to examine in the future, but we are not there yet in the policy review process. Training possibilities for law enforcement. Law enforcement is asking permission to use our buildings outside of school hours for training. Training possibilities for staff. Short in details at this time, but we are looking ahead to provide school safety training for all faculty and staff, probably when we come back to school in the fall. This is essentially important, because opening a new building to the staff, students are not familiar with. Adding training discussion to, we need for planning training, that we need to include students due to the fact that some students could have experience with past trauma that could be triggered with practicing drills. Building safety. Buildings are getting a new check-in system. The Vista system is a new system. This is a system that the visitors must use when checking in for each building. That's it.
Questions from Mr. Rahhauser? Okay, Human and Fiscal Resources, Mr. Cook and Mrs. Brenton.
Had several items. Ms. Benko gave us a, a first look at the proposed budget for 2021. Went over some details, some, some thoughts, plans, ideas that are being presented. They're actually very, very far ahead of schedule. As you may recall, we had talked about trying to bump up the schedule this year, so that the final approval could be earlier than, than usual. And the reasons for that were many, but one of the big ones is because of recruitment of, of teachers. The earlier you know what you need, the better potential pool are out there. So the intent all along this year was to bump up the timetable, and even beyond what the original plan was for this year, you're even further ahead than what you had anticipated. So, long and short of it, is that there is great potential that we may be getting a, a vote coming up as early as next month to preliminarily approve our budget for 2021. So coming up in our board meeting in February, we will be given a presentation to the full board of what that looks like, what is planned for the, you know, the positives, the, the additions, the, the steps, the, you know, the, the people that are gonna be needed, the staff members, increase, whatever. And, and then, next planning meeting night, which would be the following Thursday, their intent is to preliminarily approve our budget for 2021. And that would make it, you know, public, for public view then, and then hopefully, I'll be able to finally approve it in March. So that could be as much as two months ahead of where we typically are, you know, at that stage. So Mrs. Benko went over some of her thoughts on it. As usual, there is a deficit in it. Again, there's, there's some things that have been identified as major needs. There's some plans to use some reserve funds to try to balance the, the deficit there. And so she'll be going over that in, in greater detail coming February. We had a very brief discussion about Policy 610, which is on our consent agenda tonight regarding the bids, bid policy that we have. Every year, we have to approve the updated numbers that, that the, that's federal, correct? Federal guidelines require certain thresholds that stimulate how we have to handle certain bids and that sort of thing. So, but this comes up every year, and tonight's, that's on the consent agenda. We also had a presentation by our music department outlining the need for new band uniforms for, for next year. The current band uniforms are thirteen years old, and some of them are being held together, maybe figuratively and literally by a thread. And they are obviously, you know, they've had a very good, useful life. Thirteen years out of a uniform is pretty good, and they are in need of, of replacement. So the music department came and presented a proposal for a company to replace those. There will be a little bit of change in the proposed uniform as far as colors and that, I mean, it's still the same colors, but a little bit different design than what we're currently used to. The, the cost of that is going to be around ninety, between ninety-four, ninety-five thousand, somewhere in that range, I believe. And the company that is putting that proposal together, and it would manufacture, needs about a six-month turnaround. So with that in mind, we're gonna have to act on this fairly quickly. So look for something to come our way next month regarding that, to, to place a, a commitment on that. And then, it's, it's also good to note that, you know, the number of students that are currently involved in that program is, is a lot. is, is a large percentage of students, and it's getting larger at the high school. So there is anticipation of possibly as many as thirty additional students that will be making the transition from our current intermediate school to the high school program. Actually fifty-some, but then there's about thirty, I think it was fifty-eight and thirty was, thirty seniors and fifty-eight coming in. So about net thirty additional students. So the need is definitely there. So look for that to come our way in February to vote on. So is there anything I missed that, Mrs. Britton, Mr. Reifert?
Just on the uniform thing at the end there, you mentioned the numbers coming up, and that's one of the key issues with the uniforms themselves is there aren't enough uniforms. You know, we bring another thirty kids up to the high school. We don't have uniforms for them to wear. Mr. Bradshaw mentioned that every single uniform that we own was on the stage at the last concert. So yeah, that, that's a key aspect of this, and they are in sad shape. You know, having seen them up close and personal and have a wife who works on these things, they're, they've lived a good life, so.
Right.
Well, I think something, oh, sorry.
And I think we wanted to mention too, that I know Jim budgets each year for athletic uniform replacements, because I believe they're on a five-year cycle too. You know, you don't want to wear wrestling uniforms for too long, you know, stuff like that. So there's a rotation in that cycle too, you know, on that, on that piece.
That's kind of what I was going to say. And when I, when we see this price, we have to keep in mind that typically the other, the other uniforms are every five years, and these are, you know, if you round up fifteen years. So the, the other sports have had three, essentially three different, you know, expenses, whereas this is just one. So I think whenever we're thinking about that, that we need to keep that in mind.
The question was raised about our booster organizations and what role they play in this type of an investment. And as, as the case in sports, athletics, you know, the booster organizations do a, do a great job of helping fill the peripheral needs. This is kind of a foundational need for that program. But in the case of like the music boosters, they're filling, they're, they're funding some of the protection for these uniforms when, when sued. Yeah, things like that. And in the case of the athletics, they're doing some of the peripherals as well. So everybody's kind of contributing a part to try to make, you know, these, these costs achievable and not too much of a burden to one, one way or another. So unfortunately, you know, it's a larger group like this, when you have to turn around the uniforms for it, it becomes a higher dollar amount. So it's, maybe it gives you a little bit of indigestion at the time, but like, like you said, thirteen years, that's, it, it shows that there's a lot of care being put into them to get that many years out of them. So fortunately, we're just at that point where we do need to do something.
Any questions? Okay, we will move on now to our consent agenda. We do have a consent agenda tonight, so. Oh, yes, we do have an appointment. I'm sorry. Under Human and Fiscal Resources, we do have an appointment for a part-time custodian position. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Emma Poff as part-time custodian.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussions?
Yes, I will be abstaining from this vote due to she is a stepdaughter.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Mrs. Benko. The motion carries. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or discussions on any of these items? Is there anything you wanted to touch on, Mrs. Cream or Mrs. Benko?
I'd like to touch a little bit. I'd like Brad to come up and talk a little bit about the portable radio lease agreement, if you wouldn't mind.
Hello. As far as the portable radios are concerned, these are the radios that our building aides use, principals, assistant principals, deans use on a daily basis to communicate with each other within their building. Radios were purchased prior to me even coming here. I can't tell you how old they are. We're replacing batteries left and right. We have radios that are dying. There are different makes and models that have been purchased throughout the different years. What the goal of this is, is to purchase bulk radios by ten per building, including admin, because right now we have no spare radios. Should there be an emergency, daily use, what have you. In addition, it would put a, what they call a base station at the new high school. So we actually build our own radio system. Right now, we are currently leasing the radio tower space for, say, building aides or whomever. This would actually make it in our own system, so we don't, aren't paying that monthly recurring cost. What we've proposed is a five-year lease program. That way, of course, it brings down the cost of the radios every single year.
Thank you.
With these radios, can we then communicate building to building?
Yes.
Is it on a, like, on a repeater system?
Yeah, it'll be on the, that's what the, the base station would be, is it would be a repeater.
Okay.
So then we can actually communicate. Right now, I know the principals come over here with their portable radios. Some can talk, some can't. Just depends. This would ensure that we pretty much, I don't want to say it's going to be perfect, because no radio system is perfect, but it would be a lot better than what we currently have today.
And then now, will that have a maintenance?
Yes, there is a maintenance association.
As part of that? Okay.
Other than just standard wear and tear stuff?
Sure, understood, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Anybody have anything? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries, okay. Any other comments or observations from our board members tonight? Okay, then we have our last public comment period for items on our, the agenda. If you have anything you'd want to comment on, please come to the microphones. Okay, with that, our next meeting's Tuesday, February 18th is our regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. And then Thursday, February 20th, we have our board committee meetings at 6:00 and our board planning meeting at 7:00. So if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a second? All in favor, yes? Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.